Clark, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at C council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request it to be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda and will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 20, 2018. Item B, approval of claims in the amount of $83,910.41 and payroll expenses of $212,000... or excuse me, that'd be all right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman and a second by Mrs. Hamilton to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
We'll go on to reports. Item A and item... No finance committee? Go ahead and, Dr. Hannaford, if you would, give the hospital authority and the finance committee a report.
Okay, the hospital report from August 21st. Typical, we heard the CEO's report. We did assess that. One thing that changed, electronic health records. We're working on a new platform. Our medical staff, we had eight reappointments to courtesy staff and four reappointments to allied staff. Our QOPI, we had no report. We ended up on improvement patient care. We're compliant in all areas, but began negotiating with Blue Cross Blue Shield for the next fiscal year. And then the last, which was lengthy, but we had 21 policies that had to be reviewed, and we ended up approving all those policies. And then heard various reports from the different share convalescent home, the Homestead Foundation. Couple things, the Homestead was celebrating its 20-year anniversary. And in the convalescent home, the census was up to 60, and they hired 11 new CNAs to begin the year. And that is my report for hospital authority. I'll answer any questions if I can.
Does council have any questions? For the vote?
Finance committee that we just got done, we reviewed, signed our claims list. Some of the large claims, hotel tax fund, we had the Fourth of July spectacular that was almost 20,000. Street and alley, big costs in asphalt and concrete. Asphalt was nearly 35,000, concrete almost 19,000. We had, of course, our OWRB construction fund. We had a water construction paid of 383,000. And then AUA fund, just some large, we had the first and second floor flooring of the Homestead for 28,000. Debt service payment for 34,000. And then also an installation of a dump bed for 16,000. Had an update on grants. We're still working on several grants. One is for a new chipper to help with our limbs. We are still working on our fitness park, which we do have some funding for, and we're still trying to get some more funding to finish that project out. We talked about several financing, or several projects and then how we're financing. Of course, we are wrapping up the OWRB. Our next one that will be coming up will be our east side sewer line. And then we'll be looking at, possibly looking for the coronation for the pool. The finance report, I'll let Joe Don handle his report. And then we have a kind of lengthy discussion about the pool and the process that we need to look at to fix the things we need to fix to keep that open here the next year and years to come. And that would be my report for finance committee.
Does council have any questions from Dr. Hannaford for the finance committee meeting? Thank you. Next item is the Alva Municipal Cemetery special meeting on August 21st and the regular meeting on September 12, 2018. Lynn, would you clear the...
Okay. Since I last spoke to you, we've actually had two special sessions and one regular meeting. I can report, we're deep in the black, very financially sound. And one special meeting did with a bid from MAC Resources for putting in a pad on the land that we own in Alfa County. That was a shock to me to find that out. So we're getting $15,000 for them putting in that pad, which will go into one of the funds with dealing with the cemetery. The last special meeting last week was on putting an air conditioner in the Sexton's office. It was tabled. The low bid was $3,700. There was another bid, I think it was 42,500, but none of them included the cost of electrician to hook up from the 220 line from the box into the building. That was still unknown, so that's why it was tabled. At the county fair, the American Legion held a contest on the number of vets that were buried in the Alva Cemetery. And according to Mr. Duncan, that was like 820-plus. It was in that area there. The present three members of the board would like to thank you for increasing the size of the board from three to five, and we look forward to two additional appointments. And we'd like to also thank the city workers who helped to get the cemetery in shape for Labor Day. Apparently, like, right before Memorial Day, the city crews went in and got things in shape. The only thing I can add to that is I had no gripe when I got put onto this board, but there are a lot of people that are very upset with the conditions of the cemetery and how they are being maintained. So if you're getting chewed on, I've also been chewed on by several people, but I think that comes with the job. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions from the council? Well, I'll be looking forward to getting those appointments to the council for consideration and approval, and we appreciate all the work you guys have been doing out there. I was surprised to learn we had land in Alfa County as well. Item C is the planning commission meeting on August 27, 2018. The only item on that agenda was with regard to our item number nine on this agenda, so we'll bring that up then. Item D is the Alva Arena Authority meeting on September 4, 2018. Joe Don, do you have anything?
It looks like it was a fairly routine meeting. They had a discussion from the design committee and the funding committee about actions that had been taken, but other than that, there was really no other business or action taken. So it was just plain discussion.
Item E is the Alva Regional Airport meeting on September 10, 2018. It was a fairly routine meeting. We did have a couple items to approve. One of them's going to be on our agenda here, I think it's item 10. In order for the airport to receive its grant funds from the FAA, those run through an approval process at city council, so we'll talk about that then. But we also had quite a lengthy discussion on the possibility of some supplemental funds available through the FAA, which are probably going to be limited in time for availability, but we're working on a plan to access those, with our engineers, to access those funds and accelerate some of our projects at the airport. We'll be able to keep with our existing capital improvement plan for the airport, just bump some things up earlier for completion dates if we can qualify for these grants. It seems as if it could be what up to about millions of dollars available, supplemental extra dollars for supplemental grant funding. And so I'm anxious to see if we can meet all the qualifications. It looks promising. I'm happy to answer any questions from the airport board meeting. The mayor's report, you know, I don't know that everybody was anticipating me talking about the Alva Public Pool when they came to the meeting tonight, but as Dr. Hannaford mentioned, there's going to need to be some extensive work on our swimming pool within the next several months and then on after that for a couple of years. And so the intention is that we will, you know, be seeking public input from the community, both in formal and informal settings, to try to get a gauge for, you know, how the community feels about ongoing projects at the city pool. It's, you know, been a staple in our community since the '30s, and it has some historic value in our community, but it's also part of our community that is, it's expensive to have a pool, especially a pool like what we have. So I'll, you know, we'll be having some information come out about the particular challenges we're facing. We're still getting a handle on all of the challenges and what it may cost to bring us up to where we need to be to hopefully set up future generations where they're, you know, maybe not dealing with the size of projects that we're getting ready to have to. Other than that, I'm just going to thank the community. This past weekend and this summer, we've had a tremendous amount of activity in our community. This past weekend, I think there were at least 10 different events with regional value going on in our community, several of them happening at the college with Family Day and football game and volleyball, I believe, but the car show, robotics competition stuff going on, there was choir competitions going on, and it was, you know, a lot of regional involvement in our community, particularly this past weekend, and that doesn't happen without a devoted citizenry to carry those things out. So that's what we want to see in our community, is other people's tax dollars coming in and being spent here, aside from just our own. So really pleased with that. Last week, I want to thank council members Stelling and Sherman for, as well as staff, Joe Don and Chief Orcutt, and our economic development specialist Alex Mance for their participation in the Oklahoma Municipal League meetings in Oklahoma City. There is a ton of value in our association with that group, and one of the things that I was very pleased with, and I think the other council members and those in attendance would agree, is that in, at least, we didn't attend every session. There were dozens of educational sessions going on, you know, probably six or seven at a time for, you know, six or eight hours a day. And at least in three of the ones that we attended, they were recognizing the works that we have done in our community as best practices with regard to the way our Tiff district is being set up to help the Arena Authority, as well as the action that we've taken with regard to state question 788 and our local ordinances for marijuana. And I believe one of the others was with the role that we've had with sidewalk replacement and street repairs downtown and the development of our cultural enterprise district. It's always a good thing to go to these conferences and learn things that you can do in your community, but it's pretty good feather in your cap when you learn that you're the focus of what other places should be doing. So thanks to the council members that attended, but also to everybody that had anything to do with all of those activities leading up to this point. It's good stuff. More busy times ahead. I think we have another event this weekend with the big obstacle course that's going on, and homecoming's coming up, I think, in three weeks, October 6th. We'll be welcoming a lot of people to town for that. And I'm forgetting some other events, but Alva's going to be very busy for the next, you know, month and a half or so, and it probably won't slow down after that. So we'll roll out the red carpet and welcome everybody into our community and hope they spend lots of money in town. I'm happy to answer any questions from the council. Joe Don, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, I have quite a few things I'd like to report on tonight. First, I really want to let you know that the OML Legislative Committee has started to prepare for the next legislative session. I am a part of that committee. We met on, first meeting on August 1st. I'm at the teleconference. Our next meeting is planned for Wednesday, October 3rd, and the OML offices in Oklahoma City. As far as the projects that we've got going on right now, we've got the Young Street Tank Farm project, of course. The in-service date for this water tank and booster pumps has been postponed until September 19th. We had some issues getting four valves in that we needed for the booster pump, and this is what delayed the in-service time. We are still waiting on ONG to get some electrical installed for the pump station. We have started filling the pump, the tank. It is 95% full, and we've gotten out to do the testing to make sure that it is in sanitary conditions. We'll have to do several tests and send that off to the lab for evaluation. We have started on the East Alva Sewer Line. This project started on August 21st, has been moving slowly, mostly due to weather conditions, but we will be having a progress meeting here in the next week or so. Again, as of September, as of the September meeting, for the August meeting, we have awarded the bid for the City Hall HVAC system. There's a 150-day completion time. The completion date as of right now is February 1st. Contract was signed at $298,000. We are looking at ways to bring the project more in line with what our budget expectations were. Any reductions that will be done will be done via change order and processed through council and through normal channels. There was some, there is the possibility that City Hall will have to move for a time during this, during this construction period. The cost to move is estimated to be a little over $3,000. Again, we did talk in length about the swimming pool today. At the finance committee meeting, we were meeting immediately after this committee meeting to have more discussions on the pool with the Park and Building Committee. There are a lot of issues with the pool. We've had two companies, Locken Aquatics and Paddock Enterprises, look at our swimming pool to determine what needs to be done to bring it back into compliance with Oklahoma Health Department regulations and other regulatory agencies. Right now, the costs look like they will be somewhere between 1.5 million and 2.5 million One of the things that we've been looking into pretty extensively here lately is downtown drainage. We had been talking, at the last meeting, I reported that we had given some engineer estimates of about $64,000 to prepare an engineering plan to address the drainage downtown, but on August 28th, I had a teleconference with Oklahoma Department of Transportation. There may be some grant funding we can look into to maybe to address that drainage up on Oklahoma Boulevard instead of by the time it gets down here to downtown. Hopefully diverting some of that, some of that water way before it gets down here. That would be an 80-20 grant. We came up with our 20%, if we do proceed with it, with some estimates, it'll be an 80-20 grant. We'll have to come up with our 20%. The project will be overseen and bid out, overseen and constructed by Oklahoma Department of Transportation. As far as community development is concerned, we are looking at the need, there is a need for the development of a strategic land plan use, land use plan, I'm sorry, for the city of Alva. The most recent plan was developed in 1970. These plans are typically redone every 10 to 15 to 20 years. We have well exceeded that and looking at what needs to happen to update that plan. We'll be discussing that within our committees, within the council committee structure that we have with all the committees to determine how we're moving forward. We have several issues with, well, since August 20th, I've addressed 15 nuisance cases as far as buildings and/or other issues. We've got one building that has already been, that was slated to be, that was declared a nuisance on 4/17/2017, and we've been trying to work with the homeowner to get that house demolished, and they have not made any progress on it, so we will be looking to move forward with that in the near future. We have one house to be discussed at tonight's meeting, 928 Barnes. We've sent notifications, we're in the notification stage, to three other houses, 724 Choctaw, 414 Ceiling, and 1437 Young. All of these houses are in a state of dilapidation and need to be addressed. As far as tall weeds and grass have been concerned, we sent out letters to about 12 different houses. The timeframe on that would have ended up on last Saturday. We do need to get out, I do need to get out and see which, what has been addressed and what hasn't been addressed. The ones that have not been addressed will have, I'll report to the police officers, and they will make contact for tickets. We are looking at several different human resource issues. We just added two employees to the sanitation department. We added a grounds maintenance worker for the ARC. We are accepting applications for city inspector, code enforcement officer. Randy Gotzer's last day was August 31st. We're currently conducting interviews with consulting companies to help fill that vacancy. And there may have been some other options that have come up since then that we may be able to take advantage of, at least at a reduced cost. As far as the finances for the city of Alva are concerned, actual money collected year to date, $3,491,387. We have expended year to date, $3,635,498. This is a $144,000 deficit. Some of those expenditures that we have there would be from 2018, and these are actually actual checks written and income received. We've got about $133,000, or at the end of August, we had $133,000 worth of purchase orders outstanding that would be, that are going to be addressed at some point during this year. We have encumbered all of our debt service payments. We have encumbered all of our utility bills for the entire year, and those are going to be numbers that show up in that encumbrance call. And mayor and council, that would be my report. I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Council have any questions for Joe Don? Thank you, sir. Item seven is a public hearing to determine whether 928 Barnes should be declared dilapidated and constituting a detriment or a hazard and therefore a nuisance as defined by city ordinance intubated. You've seen the packets. We have for us the code that is applicable to the situation, as well as letters that have been sent to the property owners and pictures of the property. Hopefully you have time to drive by and see the property. And so with regard to the public hearing, I'll ask if the property owner would like to make statements. If you'll please come to the podium space.
I'm Linda Hendrickson. I own that property. How many of my houses that I own are you people going to tear down? This is not my first house. You tore down my house on East Ceiling, and I lost things that were priceless to me that could never be replaced from my great-grandparents, from my grandparents, from my dad that died, and from my husband that got killed. Those things were priceless to me. They can never be replaced, no amount of money. I have tried, I'm 70 years old. I get $630 a month check from my social security, SSI disability, and my social security check. I have tried to redo the inside first so that I could go back there. It is not my fault that the east side has a hole in it. The neighbor's tree, Iced, made a hole in my roof. They took that tree out, and I could have sued her because now I can no longer get to my downstairs apartment unless I go through the back way and come in because my retaining wall fell down, the sidewalk caved in. That's not my fault. That was the fault of the neighbor. But I did not sue her because I did not want any more trouble from anyone and because I believe that God takes care of us and that one way or another, he's going to help me through this. I have got deteriorated bones. I have MS. I can only lift five pounds, no more. My house is full of antiques again. Please just let me paint my house, get the windows in it, get the doors fixed, until I can hear back from some of these people that I have contacted about my roof. Please, that's all I'm begging. Please, give me a chance.
What time do you think you need?
I can't hear.
How much time do you think you need?
I'm probably going to need two months because some of them are, that I've called, contacted, are in Oklahoma City, and I have to wait until some of them get back from this hurricane that they're working on right now. Please, I'm begging.
Are there any other, do you have anything?
Kenny just had a heart attack August 30th. He had to have heart surgery because he was so stressed and went over there, tried to clean and work on that. Tried to get the weeds down. Every time it rains, the weeds grow. Grass doesn't grow, but the weeds grow. And we've tried to get it cleaned out. Like I said, I can only, I can't lift anything over five pounds because it can paralyze me for life. Please.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I'm glad to say, the last time they tore her house down, I went and bought all new wood and shingles and they still tore it down. That's what makes me so mad about the whole mess. We've been trying and I, and I had a heart attack earlier. In fact, I, yeah, I just got out of hospital, like she said not very long ago. And I was over there working in the hot weather and we got it, I had another guy helping me. He bought it.
And now he has to have heart surgery in the next few days.
We're old, both of us. One of us is 73 and Edwin's 74. And we both was over there trying to clean that up and take care of it.
Ron, you've known me for years, forever. You know that I try.
That's all I'm saying. We try. We ain't got the money to, you know, reach in our pocket and say, hey, do this and do that right now. We just have it not.
Let me ask you, since you don't, why do you want to keep the properties if you can't, if you can't keep, I mean, if you can't get them up?
Why?
Wouldn't getting rid of the properties be less of a burden to you than they are now?
No. Well, because it's not going to be, and you guys sue me to tear it down. I have to pay that. I can't pay that. I would rather be fixing my roof than paying for a house that's laying on the ground with all my stuff left in it that I did get to keep.
Well, I'm going to tell you something. Most of that stuff was mine. And if it gets tore down before my stuff's out of there, I've got a lawyer in Oklahoma City and I will have him to come down here.
Are you wanting to use this house again? Are you wanting to move into this house or have somebody?
We'll like to move back in it because her mother, this is what started it.
I was taking care of my mother. As long as I paid my water bill for six years, nobody said a thing about my house. My medicine cost $122 a month for one pill. And by the time I paid for the rest of my medicine, I couldn't, I had a choice. Pay that water bill that all I was using was the trash or get my medicine.
Now, what would you do? Answer my question, all of you guys. I know all of you. I know about every one of you. You probably all know me too. I'm a connect, is who I am.
And you think you can get this house in deliverable ability in two months?
Well, we'll have an inside where we can move back in it.
Move back in?
Yeah, and then, then I'll start working on the outside. I can't.
I will work on the outside. I will paint. We will get the windows in and the back door needs to be done, I know.
I got it.
And I know the kid that did the roof, that was trying to help me do the roof, didn't do it wrong. I know. I know. Because I helped shingle, I helped tin, I helped.
And I went, bought all the?
I helped shake, I helped ceramic tile. 856 houses in five years' time.
And I probably only tricked them.
And that's one reason I'm the way I am now.
I probably like.
It's because I got on the roof because I helped shingle these houses. In fact, the house down on the corner, this church, that is the church, I don't know what it is anymore. When it had shingles on it, I'm the one that helped put those shingles on it. And believe me, that was the scariest place I've ever been. But I did it. And if I could do this now, I would do it myself. And I've even asked them to let me get up there, but they're afraid I'll fall or something and get hurt worse. But I know the kid that did it was trying to help and I know that he didn't do the best job in the world.
In fact, he didn't put the right tin on there. He ain't got the right tin on it. I went and bought it for Mary Tree. That's the thing that makes me kind of, you know, mad about the whole deal is the last time I bought it, I think, you know, to fix her house over. And they went ahead and tore it down and it was laying right by the house. That's the only thing I don't understand.
Please, just give me time, Lord.
Can I ask you something else? About if you go up and down Choctaw and Santa Fe, there's a lot of houses that need tore down and it's worse shape than hers. I mean, that's none of my business. That's all I'm going to say.
I pray that each and only of you will look into your heart and please, please dig deep in your heart and help me.
Thank you, Ms. Hendricks. Does anybody else have any comments to share?
Not on that subject.
Me? Did you point to me?
On this subject?
Yes, it's on this subject.
Okay.
Okay, my name is Pam Edman and I'm the person that cut down her tree.
I can't hear.
And the reason, the tree was humongous cottonwood that had put the hole in her roof there, you know, and they were aware that we were going to do this. I didn't get a signed agreement. I mean, it's one of those situations that the wind could have blown and taken either house out. But we purchased it in 2011 and we bought it from our kids and they bought it in 2007. The last records that I have on Ms. Hendricks is that she bought it in 2006. Since we, we have owned it, there's been nobody living in there. It has a hole in the roof that was caused by this tree that was taken down. And that was, I don't remember, maybe four years ago. There is.
Can I stop you for?
Yes.
You own this house?
No, I own the one next door. I own the rental house at 924 Barnes. And like I said, we bought it in 2011. Nobody lived there then. The kids, our kids had bought it in 2007. They had small children. There's a fence around our yard because it wasn't safe for them to go over there. There is an open cellar and weeds you can fix. This house is not a home. It's a dilapidated, infested, there's skunks, cats breed over there and trash, there's cars in the backyard. I mean, the weeds actually helped hide, but this is just a city dump yard. There's sofas, I've got pictures. And it is a very sentimental thing to have your house done this way, but they have not taken care of it. They have not made that much of an attempt. And as far as valuables in there, the windows are broken out, which could have been boarded up. You know, that's a simple fix. The door right now is open. Kids go in and out. There hasn't been utilities on in years and it's a fire hazard. It is just, you can, I've got pictures that you can look in the windows and see that it's more or less like a hoarder's house. It's a fire hazard. There are people that are living in this area that they have treasures too. I've done, I've talked to a 94-year-old lady that is, her house is full of treasures. Her yard is mowed. Her house is immaculate. At 94, she's still taking care of herself at home. And the same way with other people, there's children that have moved into the area. You have two schools. You have the middle school and Longfellow that kids walk by this every day. The front, and like I said, you can mow the yard, but this house, as far in my opinion, is, is dilapidated and the money that it will take to put it in working condition is greater than, than its value even after it's put together. And I wouldn't feel so bad if they actually had lived there. Like I said, this isn't a home, it's a fire hazard. And the, I have orkang come out every month. There's rodents over there. People put their trash out, you know, and it's just a breeding ground for cats. It's, it's just a health hazard to the people that try to keep their yards, their homes a home. This could catch on fire and people that really, that, I'm not saying she doesn't have treasures in there, but they have had, since 2011, there has been very little done to that house. And they think, two months, give you two months? How many years? I mean, even in 2017 when the kids bought it, it was dilapidated. So I don't, I don't think that, I think as far as the time schedule, they've been given years. And it's not, it's, it's bad to put this concern on the neighbors. It's, it's just like I said, if you go in that house, which the back door's open, and see all the boxes that I have pictures that you can see in the window, I took a picture straight up, you can see where the tree that we had cut down and paid for.
Yeah, it was your tree too. That was your tree because it's on the property, you know? Yes, it was.
Yes, it was.
And I done, I done.
Sir, sir, we need to keep this civil.
I said it was her tree. It was your tree because I had it surveyed.
Okay, well, and for years, you know, they talk about, they made it circle.
And the city inspector that we had said that it was on your tree and when you had it pulled out, he said, I should have sued you because it knocked in my retaining wall and the sidewalk.
I'm going to stop, ma'am, let's time out. If there are civil matters that need to take place between you two parties, you need to do that outside of this meeting. We're not going to be the judge.
I was not suing.
We're not going to judge whether or not you have a right against your neighbor. What we're looking at, strictly what we're looking at is the condition of this property as it relates to the ordinances for the city of Alba. The pictures that we have and the condition that folks can see when we drive by it, there are, there are numerous violations to our code for nuisances, numerous, numerous. And those of us that have lived in the community, we've, we've seen it over, the, I, I don't doubt that you have treasures in there. And I don't doubt that you have other priorities for your finances. But I do doubt that this property, with your needs, will be able to be brought back to a condition that, that meets within our local ordinances for property magnets. I, if there were to be any leniency, I mean, we'd have to have pretty compelling evidence that within two months, you're going to have the finances as well as the contractors, as well as the ability to move your belongings to someplace secure so that you could do all that. And I, I don't, what, what can you do to compel us that that will happen?
Well, I, I can get my stuff out of there. Yeah, I've got a storage unit, go put it in. And you can talk to Dr. Edgar. He knows I have. He, I rented it from him.
I wish Mr. Edgar was here to vouch for that.
Yes, sir. I wish he was. He, he would judge that. In fact, I've got two of them over there waiting and said if I need them.
Kelly, how, from the day that we condemn it, how long would they have to get their stuff out of there before we completely close it down and knock it in? I mean, just demolish it? Do they have time to get their stuff out of there before?
Well, there's that one house that we've been, that 724 Choctaw, well, it was declared nuisance in April of 17. So we, you know, it's been a year and a half.
And I want to be clear, our goal is not to expend our taxpayers' dollars on tearing this down. Our goal is for you to take care of it, whether that's demolishing it or whether that's fixing it up. Our goal is not to spend taxpayer dollars to tear down any one of the houses. However, our, we do have an obligation to uphold our code of ordinances when it comes to nuisances. So we would love for you to take care of this.
If I paint it and if we fix the windows and the doors and we wait for these people, like I said, to contact me, someone from there that I've called several different numbers, some of them to contact me to tell me. There are places, in case Alba doesn't know it, there are places that help people like me that are poor.
I think those conversations need to be expedited.
Well, can I add, you say?
And I wish Alba had one. We used to, people helped people. We knew our neighbors, we helped our neighbors. If someone got sick across town, we took food to them. If someone passed away, we took food to them. It doesn't do that anymore. Now everybody just seems like they're on to everybody and I'm tired. I was told the last time on my house that I was being used as, as an example. I am tired of being used as an example. I am tired of being harassed.
I'm not, I'm not telling you that.
My mother and I had a daycare here for 37 years and I was licensed with it. And I probably took care of half of the kids in Alba.
Ma'am, I'm not telling.
Or their parents.
I'm not telling you that you're an example.
I know that's true.
None of the people here are telling you you're an example. We're telling you that your property is out of compliance with our nuisance ordinance.
Can I get my stuff out of there? Will you give me time?
That's a reasonable request. That is a very reasonable request.
I have the front room.
Within a certain amount of time though, and it's.
I have the front room completely remodeled. I have it done.
But if the doors are open and kids can get in there, if the doors are open, the back door and the windows, because on this one picture, you can see the windows?
Somebody's been in there.
They kicked the door in.
And so how are you keeping your liability from somebody coming in there and hurting themselves or hurting each other? I mean, you're really got a liability problem of your own.
We've got it fixed now so they can't get back in there. And we're going to put, we've got a new door to put in the back.
What about, we've got pictures of windows out. How are you going to, are you going to cover those windows up to keep kids and animals out or? How can you keep critters and people out of there?
We've got, right down on the bedroom window, we have plywood put up to keep the critters out.
Is there, does the council have any more questions? Is there any new information that can be shared?
I'd like to speak. My name is Susannah Welty. I actually live across the street from this home and I have for the last three and a half years. And I will say that in those three and a half years, the only two times, I can count two times that I have seen people at that home, one was to cut down the weeds within the last two weeks and one was putting the rusty cheap, looks like it was from the junkyard metal on that roof. There's no way that was sold from Erickson Steel because it looks like they literally went to the junkyard to buy it. I have a young family, I have small children, you know, I bought this home to, for my family to live their life there. And that's not safe for my kids to be around. If they wanted to be friends with the kids in the rent house across the street as they grow older, that would be a concern for me because what if they get curious and they go in that home and they get hurt? So as a homeowner, as a parent, as a citizen, I feel for their situation, but, you know, we've all had hard times and it's, it's just not safe. It's not safe and, you know, we need to keep our city beautiful. We need to take pride in what we have because we have a great community and we have a great city. And it's, it's something that I think needs to be addressed and I don't see how if it took them three and a half years to do those two minor things, they can get it painted, have it sealed properly so that there are no more varmints, which we have a massive problem in that block because of it. I don't see how they could do that. It's just not reasonable financially or physically to be able to do those things.
Is there any other comments to share with the council before we move to the next item where we consider our action? Well, thank you everyone who shared information with us. We'll move on to item eight, discussion of possible approval, disapproval of declaration of dilapidation for 928 Barnes and authorize staff to take appropriate action to abate the nuisance. Council members?
Make a motion to approve the declaration of dilapidation of 928 Barnes and authorize staff to take appropriate action. staff to take appropriate action to abate the nuisance.
Sir.
I have a motion to approve the declaration of dilapidation for 928 barns and authorize staff to take appropriate action to abate the nuisance. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thank you, and we will get staff working in that direction. Item nine is discussion and action on ordinance 2018-006, changing zoning on the following tract of land within city limits of Alba, Oklahoma, from medium density residential, RG8, to general commercial. Said land described as follows, lots 23 and 24, Block 3, East Hill addition to the City of Alba, Woods County, Oklahoma, repealer, severability, and declaring an emergency. This was on the previous planning committee meeting agenda for consideration. The planning committee's action, I believe, was to grant the variance, or grant the, or the zoning change. I have my concerns to take a residential, two lots of residential property in the middle of residential property and have that be rezoned as commercial. You know, if the property owner were to move or the, you know, sell the property, then it's, it's zone commercial and it could be an entirely different purpose than for a storage building. The other side, you know, the council members were discussing as well, but the other side of this is I don't have a problem with storage sheds. I don't have a problem with that. The only problem is that that goes against what our ordinances say. As Joe Don mentioned in his report, we have a need to review our land use ordinances for our community and we, seems like here lately, we have that need to review that, you know, at least on a monthly basis, we are dealing with a property owner or neighbors of property owners that are looking to do some type of development which is, or is either undesirable or outside of what our ordinances allow. And I, I'm conflicted because I, I don't think that this should be awarded, but I don't think that the requesting party has any malintentions at all. And I think if I were that property owner, I would want the same thing.
Mayor, if, if council would go back to page 31 on their planning commission report that we had on August the 27th, there's a paragraph on there stating what happened at the planning commission meeting?
I'm sorry, Ms. Stelling, I totally blew it.
Page 31.
So as a planning commission, you guys approved the next step?
We did after very lengthy discussion, as it says here, that we have received.
Not the animal stuff.
No, all the, that we had two protests and then two people were here to discuss it with us. I mean, we really talked a long, long time with them. And just some of the things that Mr. Moore told us was that when he went in and visited with Mr. Goucher at that time, he told him he didn't think there'd be any trouble getting that there. And I claimed to Mr. Moore that was the reason everybody hadn't bought the property. And he had, you know.
What was the opposition? The two people?
They just didn't want another storage shed, storage building in that area, they thought that.
Is it gonna be like a large building, not like?
Thirty by thirty, I believe, or something like that?
Thirty by thirty.
Thirty by fifteen.
Listen, there are, there are storage sheds I'm aware of down that block.
Right next door to it, right across the alley.
Across the other way, okay, you're right.
Dr. McKinley's. And then there's.
I think so.
Storage sheds further down.
Part of what, when I was looking at this, part of what the problem has been, it has been since remedy, was that there was a lot of variances given in the past that probably shouldn't have been variances. And my concern is that, it's, it's kinda like what Kelly said, you zone this commercial, they decide in 20, 30 years to sell it and I can put a vague shop on it. I can put whatever I want to on it, that's commercial, right in the middle of a residential zone.
And the commercial zoning is very, very, very broad.
Very broad.
In what it allows. Very broad.
Well.
And that's my, my concern with it as well. I believe the ordinance is.
So we haven't, we haven't done anything with this.
I believe the ordinance should be reviewed and adjusted to allow for a personal storage shed to be built on residential property before we start converting residential property to commercial property in the middle of the residential zone.
Thing about it is, there's a lot, whether or not it was gone to the right stage or not, there's probably a lot of buildings there that have already been done that way. And I agree that, yeah, we need to review a lot of stuff, but I don't see where.
The change being requested, though, is a long-term, long-lasting change.
But we can review the.
Whereas the ordinance can be reviewed.
Right.
And in a month, two months, I believe is, I mean, for what's being asked for this, I believe is feasible.
It states it here, it would be used for personal use and not commercial use, so why not, why not just a personal building? Why could, why, why does it not allow by zoning?
You can't put a building without a, a residential structure first on a residential property.
It's two residential, if I'm understanding correctly, there's a, there's a home on one lot and the other lots, there's no home on either lot.
It's just a small shed.
One of those.
On that one, there's a small shed.
There's a dilapidated storage shed that I think Mr. Moore was planning on taking down.
And he's taking it down. And there's a fence between yours and the one, and the one just south of you. There is a fence already there.
So there's not gonna be like a home, a storage shed, a home?
But on the other hand, I'm the one that owns the property on the south side of that. And I've already, I'm hemmed in on the east side with a large metal building. And if that's put in on the north side of me, I'm sandwiched in there. And I don't think that should be allowed, period. Your ordinances give it residential and it should be residential. Same thing happened with Yvonne Philstedt, she bought that property over on ceiling. They wanted to change it to commercial. And thank God they didn't. We got some new houses up there, kind of improved our end of town. You know, my neighbor, Donnie Mahon's fixing on spending $40,000 to redo his house. What's happening due to the value of his property, my property, I've got three properties there. So.
Thing about it is, even if we were to go along with the planning commission, we could still look at adjusting the rezoning and stuff. At least that gives him a chance to get, instead of putting him on hold for times, but we can still go in there and.
I don't disagree with allowing him to build the building. I disagree with changing the zoning to commercial to allow him to build the building.
I believe what.
I think Winters is saying the same thing. My, my issue is, in 20 years down the road, that metal building can become anything from a welding shop to a car repair to whatever they want to, because our commercial zoning is so broad.
Unless we go in and.
We need to go in and change the ordinance, not change the zoning.
What he's saying is, you change the zoning today, you change the zoning today, if you allow a building, that's part of the restructuring, the zoning ordinance is, you can zone that property back red.
They don't say that that building, they said, that, you know, they're gonna build it back.
Still puts it on.
Otherwise you have to tear down the building and move it.
You can't.
Did you guys hear that? Did you?
But if you rezone it, the owner would have to remove the building because it'd be no longer in compliance.
Well, if we change your ordinance to agree with it, that type of building to where, what we're talking about doing anyhow, about changing the ordinance of commercial or making a, whatever, separate classification, but if we rezone it after.
I understand, you could, you could rezone and say residential, could then put up commercial buildings. That's what you'd be doing in essence. I think the real issue for the night is the, when a piecemeal in residential areas, piecemeal changing the zone. Most cities, that's more of a comprehensive review and they make the decision based on the nature of the area and different.
So what is the, kind of a blend of commercial and residential?
We would need to change the ordinance to say that you can build certain types of buildings on a residential lot that are not used for commercial. It's not a commercial building because he's using it for personal use. Size of the building, I don't think has any bearing on that or the type of material it's made out of. I think it just needs to be changed to where he can build that type. Right now, it says you can't build it unless it's got living quarters, is that correct?
The majority of the, my understanding of the ordinance is that for that zoning, it has to be a residential purpose first. So if they were to put a metal building out there with an apartment in it, that would be fine. If they wanted to put a tiny house there and then a storage shed there, my, my understanding of the zoning right now would be, that would be fine. But to have something that's purely a zoning, purely a storage building in a, on a individual, individual res, lot, without a residence attached to that lot, is against the code. Code says it has, lots in that area have to be primarily residential. And what is the problem? You should say a direct no to that, because we're already zoned residential.
I, I think from this item, you're, you're accurate. I think what the bigger question is, is that since 1970 something, our ordinances haven't been updated. That, that's the bigger question. It's, it's one where we do need to, and we've been discussing this as a council to go ahead and start the process of updating our, all of our local zoning. Because, and I'm not saying that this, this would be acceptable in the new upgraded version or not, we would go through public hearing processes and we would, we would hear from everybody and find out. I, I hate that this is, it's going to create a burden on the property owner that was unanticipated.
He was told by our city inspector that it was okay to do, that he could go in, I mean, that it would be no problem to him to have it done. That's the part I, I felt bad about.
With the variances that were being granted at the time because of how the board of adjustments was being run, Goucher was probably pretty accurate. But after we fixed that issue, because it was an issue, there was no longer.
Well, he didn't tell me the time because he already bought the land. And I got a call the other day.
I bought a lot in 1980, built a shop on it. I couldn't do it. So I go over to Flynn Street and bought a commercial property and done what I was supposed to do and built me a shop. And, yeah, I mowed it for 30 years, but, yeah, my sister, I'd sold it to her and she wasn't ever supposed to sell it, but she snuck in there and sold it. You know how that is. And she'll be here the 20th and I'm gonna have a good talk with her. But, yeah, I think what's right for one will be right for everybody else. You know, I bought the lot and I had to.
I live next door to him and it's part of my family, he's my dad, it's family. And even if you do change your regulations to, you know, it ain't gonna matter, do you want a commercial building in, as, like you said, in a residential area? I mean, I don't want an automotive shop blocked from my house. I don't want it looking like the Smarts up there across, down the street from the, you know, I'm not saying that Mr. Moore's gonna do that, but I think I'd remember my dad saying that he plans on only being here for 10 years and then what's gonna happen.
May I just suggest that the length of our residency in Alba is irrelevant. We own the property, we intend to own the property, and that should not enter into the consideration whatsoever.
My concern, I don't want to create heartache and make, be a bad neighbor, so to speak. I mean, I'll leave it up to you, I'm here to answer any questions, you know. I don't want to put it all on Randy saying, yes, he told me I could do that, he said you don't have to go through the channels, but I don't see it being an issue. And driving around town, we've been here for three years, I see buildings all over in residential neighborhoods, so I didn't think it was gonna be a big deal, to be honest with you. But, I mean, I understand it's only, I have no intention to make it commercial, but I understand your concern down the road, if somebody buys it, if I decide to sell it 20 years, 30 years from now, what's gonna happen with it? But, I mean, I'll leave it up to you. I mean, either way, I'll be fine with your decision, so.
But if you look at my point of view, another large building, metal building, that close to me, be gone completely hemmed in, metal building. And it shouldn't be that way, because it's residential.
I'm gonna close the discussion to just the council now at this point. Council members?
I was gonna say, I got a call the other day from another gentleman who owns two lots over on Chalk Talk, and he was wanting to do the very same thing. He's supposed to put a storage shed there. And he came down to get his permit and was told no. So I think it's time we do something to, I mean, this was, he just wanted a small building on there. So I think we've got a lot of problems.
You know, and this is, it's nothing, I mean, it's along the same lines of 30 years without an asphalt overlay in town. It's along those same lines. I mean, do you, at what point do you stop doing what you've always done and start doing the things that, that are best practice type things to, to move the city forward? I, I hate that there's been precedent set all across town, I hate that. It drives me nuts, because it was, it was allowed by, it was allowed against the code. Whether it was allowed through the proper channels, we don't even know that, in a lot of instances. And so it's, I'm very conflicted. But I, I, the way this item is written, I, I don't think that I would recommend passage. But I think we do have a bigger issue to address, and that's land use within our city limits, the whole thing.
So we're talking about also addressing the zoning to where actually we'd have a classification that would make that legal?
I'm, I'm saying that when we readdress zoning, all options are on the table for consideration. That doesn't mean all options are going to be what is decided on.
Right, but it'd be something similar to that to where we could, instead of commercial, there'd be another, make a classification or something to where it possibly be legal.
You know, there's.
To make all these other buildings that are in, you know, just right smack between houses now.
Communities have set up their zones in various different ways, in lots of different places throughout our state and other states. Some of it says these type of buildings are only allowed in this side of town or parts of town. Some of them said, you know, within such, such and such proximity of, I don't know, living quarters or schools or whatever. I mean, there, we would have, when we reconsider these, we would take the input from the public, what they want to have, and we would develop our ordinances accordingly, with a, you know, mind for the future. And it may be that when this all shakes out, it may be that our public is fine with this and we vote and approve changes to our, our zoning ordinances. And it may be that they're not. It may be that they never have been, it's just that it's always been allowed in the past and that at some point, like I said, at some point, we need to review this and make sure that the way people felt in the 1970s is still the same way they feel in 2018 and not on beyond.
Thirty to thirty building would be basically a spec on that, those two lots.
Well, them two lots, the first 25, the 45.
But to address your concern, there's nothing that would prevent him from building a home ma- But to address your concern, there's nothing that would prevent him from building a home made out of steel.
Yeah.
And so that would not, I mean, you could still be hemmed in by steel buildings.
Yes, that's true.
But even if he went out and got that.
Homes aren't as tall as most of the steel buildings, the storage buildings.
Went out and got that whole house out there on Holiday Motel, parking lot, there's a, a long skinny house, little house thing. He could put that on there and then build his building and he'd be okay?
I, I don't get me lying to you about what the code says.
I mean, get back in the.
The code would have to be reviewed, but the, the codes would have to be reviewed for anything that was done. But it's my reading right now, today, my understanding today, that the, in a residential district, the primary use of the property needs to, is required to be residential. Doesn't say how big the facility needs to be. It says the primary use of the property needs to be residential.
And then the other side of that would be the lot coverage requirements that not exceed 35%. Is there any further discussion?
Well, I certainly don't want a metal building next to my house. And over here on Vine Street, there's a metal house stuck in between two nice homes and it sticks out like a sore thumb and it's ugly.
We'll keep that in mind when we do review those. Ms. Hader?
I've, I've lived out there since 1957 and we've never had this problem before. And my real concern is Mr. Heron being hemmed in because he won't get any air at all. And I just don't like that at all.
Any further council discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to disapprove the changing of, oh lord, might have ruined this whole thing, from medium-density residential, RGA2, to commercial CG on land described as lots 23 and 24, Block 3, East Edition of City of Alva, Woods County, Alva, Woods County, Oklahoma, repealer severability and declaring.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Mr. Sherman and second by Mr. Winters to deny changing ordinance 2018-006 from medium-density residential to general commercial, general commercial as stated. Is there any further discussion, council? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
No.
Stelling?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
So the motion is carried. I thank everybody for helping us participate in this discussion. Item 10, it's discussion and action to authorize the city business manager to sign the grant agreement for federal assistance for AIP in the amount of $107,820 for the Alva Airport. As I mentioned in my report for the airport, this is a part of our regular, part of our regular capital improvement projects at the airport, which receive funding from Federal Aviation Administration. And the airport board did vote to recommend approval for the city council. Think that about covers it, this is primarily gonna be used for apron projects at the, at the airport, more places.
This is the design of the apron project.
Design of the apron project. We have a, we have an opportu, I'm gonna have to keep business moving, sir. I've gotta keep my business moving here. We, we have an opportunity for more comments at the end of our agenda.
Well, all I'm gonna ask you, can I, are they gonna give me enough time to get my stuff out?
Well, he'll contact you. He'll contact Mrs. Hendricks.
Who? Okay, I'll come and see you then.
Thank you all.
Thank you. We, the airport is recommending the acceptance of this and, like I said, it's gonna be used to start designing places to park more airplanes. Any questions? Joe Don, anything to add?
No, because this is, this is the typical process that we like to use in this grant process. The, the City of Alva is the contractee. And they are the ones that have to approve the, just like any other grant that we get, have to approve, accept the grant conditions. And what would be required at this point is for you to appoint me to sign the grant agreement and then our counselor has to sign off on a place for the, to certify the, to certify the grant contract. And he's reviewed that and he's informed me it's, it appears to be in compliance. That's what he signed, this signature page.
Any questions?
I make a motion to authorize the city business manager to sign the grant agreement for federal assistance for AIP 3-40-0003-010-2018 in the amount of $107,820 for the Alva Airport.
Second.
Is that Danny?
Yes.
I have a motion by Dr. Hannaford and second by Mr. Winters to authorize city business manager to sign the grant agreement for federal assistance for AIP number 3-40-0003-010-2018 in the amount of $107,820.